Welcome back. We're now going to transition into the next phase, which is we're going to be talking about our facilities. Mike's been working with architects pretty much nonstop for the last year and a half to present to you today what we have so far. So Mike, take it away.
Okay. Thank you. Just so you understand how this is organized, I kind of have it broken into four sections. We'll talk about an overview of the process that we've followed and some of the things that we learned and the pathways that we took to do these studies. Then we'll talk about Soul and High School renovation. Then we'll talk about Soul and High School and the new construction study. And then we'll talk about the elementary schools and the space concerns that were brought up at strategic planning. After each section, I'll pause, and if there are questions about that section, let me know. But much like with Debbie's presentation, if I can get through each section, I may answer questions along the way. And then if there's time for any questions at the end of the section, that'd be good.
Do you want to wait till it's all finished?
No, I think as we break it into the four sections, it might make more sense.
Okay.
So we really had commissioned two studies. So one was to, you know, develop a report that details the feasibility and the costs of renovation for Soul and High School. And then another comprehensive report that would detail the feasibility and costs of building a new Soul and High School. And so that was the question we were asked. Should we renovate or should we demolish and build new? And one of the themes of the discussion was, whatever we do, the building has to match the quality to our standard of excellence. And that did not mean that it should be full of all of the wants that everybody would express when we were in the process. Not that it would be the greatest, most shiniest building in America, but it needs to be of high quality. And what I wrote was, "A high-quality facility, updated for the future, that improves the ability of students and teachers to perform at their best, all the while achieving this in a financially responsible and reasonable manner." So that was how we approached this. We wanted to be fiscally responsible, prioritize needs over wants, make sure that we were updated for the future, and we're providing a pathway to something high quality. I worked with our architects at Soul Harris Day, and we conducted interviews with the Soul and High School administration and the teachers. We touched every teaching department at the high school. We touched some of the non-teaching departments of the high school. And the outgrowth of that was this thing called a program of requirements, which I'm going to show you. It's the program of the requirements that the teachers and the administrators expressed that they need in order to be comfortable and ready for the future. That then would inform the development notes, which are basically the synthesis of all of the data, which I will show you. And then we use that as the jumping off point to determine what we were going to do in either direction. While we were doing that, it seemed prudent to do geographical and topological surveys. So we contracted to do that, which are included in your packet. Anytime you do new construction or renovations, that's standard practice. And as a part of that, there are soil borings that happen. So you might have seen a company come out taking core samples of the ground in order for us to determine suitability of the soil and buildability on any of those sites. We did not do a new study from the OFCC. That was something that came up in strategic planning was, well, it's been a few years, why don't we get an updated study? As I looked into that, I learned that the first one you get from the OFCC is free and very comprehensive. The second one you have to pay for. And when you do that, the results don't change much. Your facilities are what they are. We know our facilities based on that OFCC study and what we've done over the years. So it didn't seem necessary, and our architects agreed. But you will see, as we move forward, there are significant parts of that study that were utilized in the planning. And then the other thing that we did that was not really discussed, but seemed prudent when we're talking about your flagship building, is how does it fit into a global or master site plan for our campus? And so when we think about renovation or we think about new construction, we also wanted to think about it not in a vacuum and not alone, but also amidst all of the other major needs that maybe weren't discussed at strategic planning, but that are still there and that are still significant. So when we get to that point, you will see that whether it's a renovation or a new construction, there are phases to the plans. Some of those phases constitute a base plan that is really just addressing Soul and High School. And then some of the other phases are optional. And those phases are for your consideration for whatever it seems prudent to do those things. And we'll talk about those. So I just want to, just so you understand, this is what the program of requirements looked like.
I just want to interject for just a quick second. We are going to transition into the white binder. The white binder has all of these exhibits. So as he's showing them, you'll be able to see the copies of them. And the exhibit letters correspond to the document that he's showing in the tab.
So this is Exhibit A. These are worksheets that we used that addressed all of the different areas of the high school. Here's what the worksheet looks like. As we're talking about the science spaces, for instance, here where it says physics and biology, forensics, we had discussions about adequacy. And one of the things that you'll see is that the existing square footage of our classrooms is around 800 or 950, 980 square feet. If you look at the OFCC studies and you talk to teachers, those square footages are tight. They were built for a different era of teaching. And the standard now is 1,200 square feet. So what we did is we went through each of the different sections, touching special education, touching administrative areas, the wellness center, and the media center, all of the areas, and developed a new set of square footages that seemed to meet the needs of what were being reported to us and also fell in line with adequacy standards. And then that sort of develops Exhibit B, which becomes the summary of all that data and the different recommendations or desires.
Now, I want to make this clear as we're going through this. And I just, because I think there might be some confusion, because I know for each person that I've talked to about this, there has been. This is not a design of what the buildings are going to look like or anything like that. This is talking about a feasibility and cost study, about what an estimated cost would be for a building of the necessary square footage with the amenities that we're looking for. We didn't get into finishes and landscaping and those kinds of things. Those things happen later when you guys as a board decide, is this the direction that we want to go and the process that we need to go through it? This is just the preliminary work. So keep that in mind as you're looking at the diagrams. Don't expect to see like 3D flyovers of new facilities or renovated facilities. It's really the bones of what we need.
Yeah. And that said, when you read through this report, you'll see the trends of, by and large, the spaces that we have, we will look for ways to make them bigger. There's a need for more square footage at the high school. And so when we get to that renovation part, you'll see how that can be done and what limitations and opportunities there are. Exhibit C is just the topological surveys that we did. You can look through those. Those are not very exciting. And you probably need some specialized knowledge to really understand them, which the architect has.
Specialized knowledge.
I know I don't have, like, I know I look at it, my eyes cross a little bit.
I already looked at it, and I can tell you, looking at it again is not going to help me.
If you have questions about those and you want to learn about them, I can't connect you with them. When we did the renovation study, here's kind of what we came up with. We came up with a renovation plan. And we added in some additional phases for things that we knew were needs or a major want for the school district. And we'll take a look at all of that in sequence. Those remaining optional phases were things like a fieldhouse, a bus compound, and a storage facility. The fieldhouse has been discussed in the community for all of my 27 years. I remember the first discussions of it in my first strategic planning when I was still a teacher. And so it's been something that's been talked about and talked about. And so that's in there. The bus compound, we know, is quite frankly, beginning to look in poor condition. It's not large enough to hold all of our fleet. And so, you know, the idea there is, would you renovate that or would you build something new that you can get all of your fleet behind a fence and properly cared for? And then a storage facility, we don't really have any storage for the district. And so we can talk about how that can be achieved. The total cost for a basic plan to renovate is $161,287,000. And Exhibit D will break down the costs for all of those different phases. If we're looking to just renovate Soul and High School, that project costs phases one, two, three, and five. And you'll see that $161 million figure there. So let's talk about what is entailed with that. One of the things that came out of the renovation study, time and time and time again, was the idea that daylight and having access to daylight is critical for student learning, not just from an academic standpoint, but also a wellness standpoint. The way that Soul and High School is now constructed.
There is none.
Right.
It has, you know, lots of different additions, lots of internal rooms. And so part of the plan, if a renovation was chosen, would be to increase daylighting, which can be looked at in this diagram here. And the limitations that we have here are somewhat significant. There are areas up here, you can see my cursor, where natural daylighting happens. Yeah, this is Exhibit G. The bars of yellow is where you'll see existing windows and daylight access or places where we can create them. And then if you look closely, you'll see some yellow squares, which may represent the opportunity to put skylights in. In that entire building, there is an opportunity for 15 additional skylights.
In the entire high school?
In the entire high school. The problem.
Yes, that makes sense.
The problem that you run into is that a majority of the existing learning and staff support environments don't have access to daylight due to that existing layout that was created by multiple additions. And the opportunities to introduce daylight, as I said, are very limited. But this is a schematic of a plan of how we would improve daylighting, but we would nowhere near approach what would be optimal for students and staffs.
Mike, where on the plan are the daylights? From that diagram there, can you show us where they are?
Yeah. So if we're looking at.
Everywhere there's yellow, there's existing current daylight, right?
Yes. And then you can see that here on, you know, in the cafeteria, we have an opportunity to put some. You know, you scroll through it and you look at the different areas. It's tough to find them because there's just not a lot of, there's just not a lot of opportunity. Let me see if I can find it better. So there's some there. And then up here, when you look at the second floor diagram, we can put those in hallways and not really, not really in classrooms. There are, they have to be strategically placed because there's a lot of equipment that's on the top of those rooftops that interfere with the ability to design it. And so the architect really struggled to find places where we could put those.
You can't cut a hole in a roof next to a five-ton air conditioning unit because it will impact the structural stability of the roof. So he had to strategically place them. And where many of those classrooms are, there are HVAC units that have been retrofitted over the decades to make that happen.
Exhibit H will address limitations that improve adequacy. When we talk about adequacy, we're talking about those dimensions of classrooms. We're talking about space issues. And the problem with Soul and High School right now is that because of the multiple additions, and it has this thing called a double-loaded corridor construction, what that means is that a majority of the walls are supporting floors or roof above it. And so the opportunities to reconfigure existing spaces into larger spaces and more efficient spaces without more costly structural interventions or renovations is really limited. So when you think about moving a load-bearing wall that's supporting roof or second floor and roof above it, it's very, very costly to try to expand those. And so you can see that there are some opportunities to gain some space where you can create some, over here by the lecture hall, you can create some larger spaces. But that's limited to relocating non-weight-bearing walls. And those are few and far between. And so where you see the reds and the greens, that's an opportunity to expand. And where you see the blues, those are your load-bearing walls, which you really can't do anything with. So, you know, you're limited to one, two, you know, four to six locations.
So then clearly that would put a strain on any kind of a renovation-type project, correct?
Yeah. I mean, you could renovate it in terms of, you know, but you'd have to be creative with your current, with your existing space. You know, you'd upgrade the finishes, you'd upgrade furnitures, you'd upgrade, you know, maybe electrical in some of those places. But you're not really going to gain any more space in the majority of the building in terms of a classroom.
And you're still going to have a building that was built in, what, 1940?
19, yes, it's 70, 70-something years old. I think it's important to note that if we build those spaces and increase the spaces in the classrooms there, that means that there will be fewer classrooms in that space, which means we will need additional classrooms elsewhere as part of the renovation, which I think Mike is.
Well, that's the next phase, is like, part of that $161 million that I talked about, 24 million of that goes towards creating a 70,000-square-foot addition, which is necessary for a swing space.
What's a swing space?
A swing space is the space that you would use. So you can't renovate a part of the building with kids in it. So you have to vacate somewhere between 50,000 and 75,000 square feet at a time, move it into the new swing space, renovate that 50,000 to 75,000 square feet, move those kids and those classes back into that section of the building, and then move on to the next section of the building.
So the swing space always was just that? Where you just keep switching kids in and out?
Once you've done all of the 50,000 to 75,000-square-foot sections, you are left with a 70,000-square-foot addition that becomes now part of the global. We keep it, it becomes part of, part of the global high school footprint.
Right.
And so you're adding 70,000 square feet, which are more classrooms and more spaces. But if I'm being honest, if you haven't taken the existing classrooms where you have kids and you're already teaching classes and made them more adequate, you haven't created an optimal situation for kids. You've added 70,000 square foot, but the kind of 70,000 that you added isn't optimal. It'll be usable, it would be better.
It's disruptive, it's, yeah.
Talk about disruptive. The time that it would take to complete a project like this is 10 years. And I'll show you the phasing plan for that. You know, you could only renovate 50,000 square foot at a time so fast. And so the disruption that would occur with a renovation could be very, very significant for an entire decade. An entire generation and a half of kids would never know Soul and High School without construction.
And noise.
And noise.
Is it too early to ask what building a new one costs?
He's coming, he's getting there.
Surely that's the big reveal.
Is it? Okay. I just wanted to make sure. I didn't want to.
To give you an idea of what this has to look like is, you have your existing high school here, and the board offices stay where they are. There's parking lot, or no, there's the parking lot here, right? These are your practice football fields that are behind the visitor stands. And this is where you would, this is how this would work. You'd have to put this addition kind of in this area. When the architect looked at our master site, it was kind of decided that that was probably, that was the best, most feasible location for something like that. So as not to, you know, lose all this parking and so forth. So that gives you an idea of kind of what it looks like. And then you have to relocate fields down here to where the Arthur Road site is. And so kind of creating a south campus.
And the bus garage would stay where it is?
Well, you know, that's one of the phases. It's like the bus garage could stay how it is. Or an optional phase for the bus garage would be to build a new compound where everything's behind a fence and protected. And then utilize this empty spaces, you know, to create a storage facility so we can put things out of sight better. And then encumber land for the potential of an athletic fieldhouse.
That wouldn't be land we already own?
No, we own that land.
So that is the current location of the orchard baseball field.
Oh, okay, the orchard baseball.
And then, are there any questions about that layout?
Well, if you scroll down at the bottom, I just want to make a point out. The current municipal pool is right down there. Those would, we would end up using that pool space as opposed for building, we would end up using that pool space to have, to house some of our fields. Some of this work was done, some of this work was done prior to our arrangement with the city to acquire Caesar, to acquire the rights to use Caesar Field. And if for some reason that would have fallen through, we would have had to take, we would have utilized some of this land to put our own baseball field on there. But all of that worked out with the city. So we wouldn't need those fields, but we would have to change that to other practice fields just because we're losing that space where the swing space is going to be.
We would lose all these fields here. So that, there's a, that's a scheme that could be done for renovations.
Does this expand student parking spaces at all?
Well, I'm not sure if it expands student parking spaces. But since you brought that up, you know, here's what I tell you. It provides for adequate student parking. We're not going to have not enough. We'll make sure that there's enough. But the one problem that this situation would not solve is that student-parent traffic problem that we have every morning outside of the high school.
And every afternoon.
Never come to, if you come between 7:35 and 7:50, you're not getting in. And if you don't get here before five minutes or 10 minutes to three.
Yeah, you're stuck here.
You're going to be stuck here or you're not going to be able to get in until the traffic conductors let you in.
This is a silly question too, maybe, Mike, but would the, would that, would a renovation like change the outside of the building? Like, would it all be, or would it still be the same front as the high school? Would it look the same on the outside?
The outside, at this time, we haven't really discussed that, but I believe the outside would remain the same.
We would match the scheme of the, we would.
Oh, you mean of the addition? Would it match the existing?
Well, no, I mean, where we have, where you walk into the high school now and it's the sign that says Soul and High School, would that still look the same way it does now or would it be reappointed?
The main office would remain where it is. And, you know, for all intents and purposes, everything that we have now remains. We just.
Upgrade the inside.
Make some of it bigger where we can, add daylight where we can, and upgrade the finishes and the.
Like the very oldest halls that are still, whatever that, I mean, they would be re-tiled and all that stuff, correct?
Yeah, those finishes would be upgraded to new, but the bones of it would be.
But they'd be the same, alright.
And you'd still, you have those limitations of, you still have those limitations. So whatever you feel in the hallway in terms of space or whatever you feel in those classrooms that can't be expanded, those remain.
We would, it's, we're putting another, there would be cosmetic fixes that would go on in each part of the old high school in those 50,000 to 75,000-square-foot increments. So we would, you know, let's say we take the science rooms and the science and math departments go into the 70,000-square-foot addition, then we renovate those sections. Then a different subject would go into those sections. We'd leave science and math where they are. And then we would renovate the next section, and on and on until we've completed the entire building.
Right. And so, you know.
10 years later, right?
10 years later. They do kind of a phasing here where you'll see, you know, not knowing when we would start, you know, move all these numbers up two years, I guess, you know, because you're not starting at January of '25. But for illustrative purposes, you can see how it starts to, it takes, you know.
Well, clearly they do this for a living. Is this something that they do?
This is, this is.
I mean, this renovation type.
This is their expertise.
Yeah, no, I know. But I mean, is this something, I mean, do they, do most people choose sort of like a renovation thing or a new building?
I think it depends. I think that each, each district has a set of buildings that's unique and their situation is different. What we have is a very large high school with a great many additions to it. And I think that at this time, that's unique in the region. A lot of other places already have new high schools. Or, you know, they've got high schools that are smaller and they've been able to do more with them. Not everybody has the limitations that we have with the double corridor construction or the, you know, the additions.
I would also say that for a lot of places, you can do a. I would also say that for a lot of places, you can do a, you can do a cosmetic renovation where you're just ref- refreshing finishes, but you're not actually doing that. What we're trying to do is make our classroom spaces more adequate. We didn't, when we set out to do a, a study of a renovation, we weren't just talking about cosmetic alterations.
Getting new bathrooms or-
Right, we were talking about actually doing significant work to that. I, I know, like, you could think about like what Orange is doing in their space. They're not building new spaces and making their existing spaces bigger, they're changing their finishes, they're, they're doing things with furniture and things like that, which we certainly could do,
New flooring.
but it wouldn't help us. I would also say, and I'm not sure if you're gonna mention this or not, Mike, but this doesn't solve the things of our, of the seventy-year-old mechanical components that are buried under some of our classroom spaces.
You're still left with a very complicated physical plant. You're still, it's a patchwork quilt of-
All right.
HVAC, and it's a, um, it's, it's, you know, there's only other way to say it, it's just a very complicated physical plant that we've been able to manage, but it's not,
Ideal.
at all. You know, the improvements to athletic facilities would be, uh, limited, you know, to locker room renovations and things like that.
Like no indoor fieldhouse or?
If you chose to do that, that wouldn't be part of the base plan.
Gotcha.
We would, if we just chose to renovate the high school, we could do that and not do the fieldhouse. And so that hundred and sixty-one million doesn't include a fieldhouse. And it does not include the bus compound, and it does not include a storage solution. It just simply accounts for bringing Soul and High School up to speed where we can and creating that seventy thousand square foot swing space.
For a hundred and sixty-one million, and ten years later.
And ten years.
Oh yeah, yeah, don't forget.
Well, remember, because we're doing structural changes as well, we're doing places where we're having to shift load-bearing members where we can. And there's all of those things that have to happen, which isn't as simple as we're putting fresh paint on and new tile.
Right, yeah.
So that's the reason why you're seeing that expense. And essentially, we're adding another arm to the octopus that is the high school, so-
And it doesn't sound like those skylights are getting enough-
You're still not getting natural light.
Nobody's, their vitamin D's going up.
Right, and there's no first, the first floor interior rooms, there's no skylights that can work there, so.
Yeah.
Not meeting that goal.
Yep.
It isn't. And that's the renovation scheme.
Now let's talk about the new.
The new construction scheme costs less. It costs a hundred and thirty-four billion.
I told you it was too soon to ask, I got it.
Hundred and thirty-four million.
Hundred and thirty-four million?
Again, it does not, that hundred and thirty-four million does not include an athletic complex renovation or a new fieldhouse. District storage or a bus compound.
He's getting there.
Um, and then we've added something called a, a stadium south entry, which is, which is like phase seven and completely optional. But let me, let me explain what, what would happen with, um, with this kind of a scheme, and I'm gonna bounce around here. I think it's best if we just look at this. Your, your high school, your new high school would be built on the grounds formerly known as Arthur Road Elementary. And it would include a, uh, parts of it would be three stories instead of two stories. That's one of the things that brings the cost down a little bit, is you've got less foundation cost. It would, uh, move traffic completely to the other side of campus and add s- enough parking that you could bring traffic in off of Arthur Road and parent queuing could wind its way through the acreage so that there's enough space to get those cars off the streets and into campus. Busing would be wholly separate, and we would be able to connect busing to the rest of campus by creating different roads through, through the campus. The nice thing about this, uh, phasing is that not only does it give us a, an opportunity to build a new high school that's slightly larger than what a renovated high school would be, but we get to pick what those sizes of the classrooms are.
And whether they have light and-
And whether they have lights, and whether or not-
Choices.
We can, you know, we can meet the needs that were in the program of requirements that came out of those, all those interviews.
Which was the intent.
The renovation doesn't meet all of those program of requirements, but a new construction would, for far less money.
Would the auditorium be the same size?
The auditorium would be larger.
Oh, good, I like that.
Good, John, 'cause like, we can all sleep tonight.
We weren't getting out of that discussion without a larger auditorium, and it's well, and it, it needs to happen. And then all of the things, because we have such growing programs and such phenomenal quality of programs in that area, that we can also design the set construction site workshop and the stage and all of the things-
Like big enough rooms for the band and the orchestra.
Right.
Yeah, I think in the program of requirements, the, the request was for something like four band rooms, which sounds like an awful lot. But when you look at the size of the participation of our band,
Right, it's huge.
it makes sense.
Yeah.
And that's not something we can get in a renovated high school.
Right.
And so if we're looking for the future to try to bring those programs to optimal, um, you know, to operate in optimal facilities, th- this is, this is something that, that should be considered.
So Mike, does this, uh, if I could ask, does this move the natatorium and the gymnasium and the wrestling and all of that, all those?
It, it does not. The, um, the athletic complex of the current high school would remain. This is your pool, this is your main gym, this is your current weight room. And so we would keep all of those facilities because they're, they're still in good, good condition. And they allow us to, to provide an athletic complex for the community. It also allows us to encumber land for a future fieldhouse if the community or, and the board, um, decide mutually that that's where they wanna go. It sets aside that land. So we would demolish most of Soul and High School to keep the athletic facilities and create space for that future fieldhouse on the, on the site of what is now Soul and High School. The other nice thing is, we could retain a part of the building, one, one wing of the building could be retained at the tune of a, of, I think, I thought the number was on here, but a significant wing of the building could be kept and converted to district storage.
Cheaper than building a whole new building.
Much cheaper. And we know that it has, um, we know that it's in, you know, it's in very good condition, so you would see, um, in that wing where there are those, those classrooms or those spaces, we would renovate that, we'd have garage doors. And it'd be kinda hidden, uh,
Right.
in the campus, so it doesn't stick out like a sore thumb.
I just asked Fred, so if anyone else is thinking that, the, the high school building though will have gymnasiums and-
And so, yes, the new high school building would have-
So that they're not going from here to here to here and here.
Competition gym, um, it would have all those things for, for- Not only physical education classes, but, you know, we could compete in there if we wish. You know, or, you know, varsity can compete, you know, and, I don't know, junior varsity compete at the same time in, in athletics.
One of the things-
It opens up options for scheduling, it opens up options-
I just wanted to make sure that the, like, gym classes were gonna be in that building and not in an athletic facility across the camp-
Right, we would all be, we, we would not want any of those classes to travel across campus for learning, they would all be done at Soul and High School, uh, the new, the new building.
Right. Can I-
Yes.
I'm imagining like, the day in the life of a student, they would complete their classes and then say if they wanted to go lift, or if they had practice, or wanted to play a pickup game of basketball or whatever, they would need to walk where to get to the athletic complex.
Well, that's one of the things that, that, as we were looking at this, and we wanted to keep an eye on, on connectivity, w- we probably need to develop that a little better, but there's this idea here of how do we connect the high school to the stadium? And when you look at new stadiums or you look at new, newer high schools, they all have sort of this focal point entrance to the stadium. We don't really have that. We have, we have our ticket booth, which is nice, but we don't have this-
Like a corridor.
We don't have, we don't have that. But connecting our high school here, you can create this promenade sort of corridor to the stadium and then create, on the old bus compound, if you choose to do bus compound here, you take that space that's been vacated and you create your stadium entry with handicap parking and, um, you know, some of these-
It's still not, it's not kinda-
Some of these high schools have, you know, um, you know, you walk up to their stadium and you see, you know, bronze plaques of like Hall of Famers, or you see, like, you're walking through something that says, "Welcome to Soul and High School." This is a, this is a special place, and it, and it sorta wows you. So that connectivity piece is, is something that would be the start of, of how we would get kids to, to do that. Now, some kids who drive, like, they could just drive over there and park. But there could be others who would, you know, they would walk through here, they could, you know, get to the stadium and we could look at connectivity to get-
But I guess like, they would need to walk, walk that path, walk around the stadium.
Yeah.
And then get there, and then say, if they wanna go to the library or something like, I mean, it would be asking them a lot of walking.
Well, I, Stephen, I think there's a, I think the thing we need to think about is for, for some schools, like schools that don't have natatoriums, for example.
Yeah.
Um, our golf team is another example. Those kids are our cross-country team when they're doing their practices, they have to go off-site to do those things anyway. We're still staying on a campus environment, and yes, there, there is walking that's involved with that, but containing them within our campus environment, there will be flexibility, and again, this is just a preliminary study.
Yeah, yeah.
There will be flexibility for us to create pathways to the athletic complex.
Or even covered pa-, you know, I, I don't know, I'm thinking like a car, I don't know.
There's a lot, we're, we're so early in this phase in terms of that. That is definitely, by having everything still on the campus and not, not putting the high school on a completely new site, but keeping it on the campus, it enables us to make choices like that to create safe walkways and places for kids to go.
A safe connectivity effort is something I'm hearing.
Right, I mean, Michelle, I mean, kids, I mean, they do that in college every day.
I mean, it's just a smaller campus, I mean, a lot of the private schools do that, I mean, that's, it's kinda sit on that.
And on another question I have is, can you speak to, um, safety elements? Whether it's weather or, I don't even know what term we wanna use, you know, but just, but safety that every, everybody has on mind about having this new plan versus a renovation, like, what is safer for the kids?
I can speak to that.
Yeah.
So if you take our current high school, we have multiple entry points to the high school. And in some of those places where we've been able to, we've created staged entrances, where there's, you come into one, we check to see if you can come to the other.
Yeah.
But places like our senior commons or our athletic complex area, it's harder to create those staged entrances just because of the nature of the existing building. If we do a renovation, we're not really going to be able to address those things. We've done intruder-resistant glass on all bottom level walls. We'll be able to do bullet-resistant windows as opposed to just glazing on that, on the entire perimeter to go through that. We are, as per, um, safety regulations, there's, uh, tornado-proof interior places that are big enough to house the entire school that we would have to put in, that we don't have in our existing school because it was built before those regulations were going in. We can have upgraded fire suppression systems that were there. Better flow by keeping buses and parents segregated. We have a safer environment for everybody to, to park and for kids to get out, as well as it enables us to control and funnel traffic into secure zones so that there's not multiple, there's not that spaghetti of lots of places in and out. So in terms of the safety things, those are just some of the things. And because we are building new, we can have our architects and our team members look at what are the, all the safety things that we can do. And since we're building new, we'll be able to implement those as opposed to trying to retrofit, which, again, I think you've done a great job retrofitting in the security areas that we have over the years, but new construction can help overcome some of those challenges that you get with vintage construction.
If we move on and we look at a comparison of the two plans, the basic plan that I refer to is those numbers I shared with you. It, it doesn't include the additional phases that would include an athletic complex or storage or busing. There's a twenty-seven million dollar difference between the basic plans in favor of new construction. If, if, if you were to decide at this time to do everything, it'd be a hundred and eighty million dollars for the renovation scheme with the add-ons and a hundred and seventy-three to get your new compound and your stadium entry and, uh, so forth, so-
What does that cost, what does the, how much time does it cost to build that high school?
Four years.
As opposed to ten?
As opposed to ten.
And no disruption.
And no, well, limited, very limited, because it's on the other side of the campus. And so your construction is, is, is far away from where learning is happening.
Well, I think no matter what happens, there's, there's going to be-
You can finish it.
Time and issues where there's, there's going to be, I mean, I think we're going to have to come to the realization that regardless of what happens, there's going to be inconveniences as that goes on.
There always is with-
Because there always is with construction. And I, and I, sometimes we aren't real amenable to, to that these days, but I think it's, it's going to be a reality of any, any project that, that is able to be done.
It is, and, and at the end of the day, for less money in four years, you end up with three hundred and thirty-one thousand square feet as opposed to a renovated high school that only has three hundred and eighteen. So you're still, you're even getting a better, like, bigger, you're getting more value out of that. One of the things I neglected to, to share, um, just so you guys have an idea, Exhibit L shows you kind of what a future athletic complex would look like. So this is your existing pool. And this is your existing competition gym. And this is about a fifty-yard indoor turf field with a track. Weight room stays. You've got offices, renovated locker rooms, uh, the wrestling room is there, there are conference rooms and, athletic, uh, meeting rooms that can happen alongside the district storage.
And that's ostensibly where the high school is right now?
It is. Right in front here, the top would be Inwood Road. Across the top here would be Inwood Road. So that gives you a kind of a, a vision of kind of where our thinking is at this time.
How long does it take to build that?
That's a great question, I, let's look, I suspect that that answer is in the phasing plan, which would be Exhibit K. And it looks like an athletic complex renovation and new fieldhouse would take January, take roughly a year and a half.
While the other thing, in addition to the building, or at the same time?
Um, it would happen, it would happen, I mean, I guess you could do it, you, you would, you would have to wait until the new high school is complete, because you're gonna need to move out of the old high school.
But I think it's important to note, though, that if you move into the new high school, you can still, we're still gonna be able to utilize the parts of the athletic complex while the demolition is going on, similar to the phased construction. So we're still gonna get all the benefits of the athletic complex, less the, less the, um, fieldhouse. We're still gonna get the gyms, we're still gonna get the wrestling rooms, we're still gonna get the coaches spaces. It's just in addition to that, it's not gonna disrupt it, kids will be able to be in a new school with new competition-level gyms, with state-of-the-art arts and, uh, art spaces, places for activities. We'll be able to have all- places for activities, we'll be able to have all that in a shorter timeframe with less disruption to the kids.
And less money.
And less money.
So those are your, that's your renovation versus your new construction.
So are you going to do a handoff to this guy over here in the corner?
Yeah, because, yeah.
Finances.
At the end of the day, we do have to pay for that, we do have to pay for this.
I think we'll get there. At this point, I'd like to move on to the concerns about the elementaries. The, let me grab my notes here. There was concern at the strategic planning meeting about perceptions of inadequate space for students. And there were real concerns, you know, a year and a half ago, not knowing what was growth in Soul and going to look like, and how is that going to impact our enrollment projections? And can we collect some data that can help us to understand what we might be up against when we look at space concerns at the elementaries? And so there was concern about that, there was concern about whether or not we were staffing those buildings appropriately based on the established classroom guidelines. And then there was also concern about with growing enrollment, are the common spaces in those areas undersized? Your gyms, your cafeterias, your parking lots, and even some of your special education and sensory spaces, which are not common, but are definitely needed and have to be looked at. When we started this study, we started by taking a look at enrollment projections and studying capacities of the buildings. We have our traditional calculation methods that we've used internally for projections, and at the same time, Fred thought it was a good idea for us to contract with Davis Demographics to do some enrollment projections as well. And when we looked at our methods and Davis Demographics projections, what we started to realize was, when we did the Davis Demographics projections, those projections are, actually the last few years have matched the actual enrollment of those years. So that helps us to have trust in that study that was done by Davis Demographics. And at the time they did the study, I believe, and Fred can weigh in on it if I'm incorrect, but I think they were aware of some of the same concerns that we had about possible growth within the city, Liberty Ford property, Hoffa Golf Course, an additional apartment building potentially, some of those kinds of, some of those kinds of things. So when we looked at the demographics study and realized that it began to match what actual enrollment was during those time periods, when we look at, you know, this was done in '21, '22, the last couple of years has pretty much matched. One of the things that they're saying about our elementaries is that expected enrollment in the elementary schools kind of look like this on a five-year and 10-year basis. On a five-year basis, we can expect Lewis to grow about 2%, which is roughly 10 kids, I think, if I'm doing that correctly. But over a 10-year period, their enrollment is going to stabilize. This is probably not significant unless, you know, if I'm the principal at Lewis, you know, it might feel significant because, you know, I'm being asked to deal with a few more kids and we have, you know, to be creative with space and structure sometimes when that happens. But I think what's interesting is that, look at these enrollment projections for Parkside and Roxbury. They're actually dropping. And again, they're projections on a study that we think we can trust.
Does these projections include if the state ever requires full-day kindergarten? Because like, right now, if you get full day, you pay for half.
Yeah.
So a lot of people.
So this is what I would say to you, right now, we have one classroom of less than 25 kids of half-day kindergarten. So if the state requires us to move to all-day kindergarten, it would not create additional spacing concerns because those kids would just be dispersed throughout those classes, and we already have a classroom for half-day kindergarten.
Okay, so we'd be okay?
We would be okay there.
But to that point, while we look at these enrollment projections, and we look at like, what the current enrollment is of the building versus the capacity, there's no question that some of those, that two of those buildings are fairly tight. You can make an argument that Roxbury is fuller than we would like it to be, approaching capacity, and Lewis has still got some space to go. But based on the projections, we're looking, that's probably going to subside. There's a bubble that has come through, and it doesn't seem to warrant expansion of those buildings at this time. That said, because of unpredictable circumstances that might change in enrollment, actual enrollment, it seems prudent to plan, to develop plans for what would expansions of those buildings look like. And when we looked across, when we looked across the state at districts that are growing rapidly, and Olentangie and Columbus comes to mind, they tend to build their elementary schools to a capacity of around 650, 725 students, somewhere in there. And so we asked our architect to study Roxbury and Lewis to come up with a plan so that if we felt like we did need to, if we did need to add on to the buildings, what would that look like? We have a plan ready to go, so we wouldn't have to waste time developing it.
Would it be fair to say, Mike, that the plans for the two elementary schools are less comprehensive? Because they're more of, we would do more detailed things with soil borings and all those kinds of things like we did and interviews if we were more certain that we were going to need those things in the shorter term?
Yes, so what we determined was a 30,000-square-foot view, we already did soil borings on all of it. So we know that suitability for building in those areas is a go. But we then asked them to sort of lay out and design a concept of how do we add so many classrooms? What's the expansion possibilities for each of those buildings? And I want to show that to you. One of the things that we need to continue to do, though, is to continue to monitor, you know, our staffing levels based on these classroom guidelines. And so these are guidelines that we use all of the time. They are, it's data that we're looking at. Anytime, you know, anytime that we have a student enroll, we're taking a look at those class sizes. So basically, if it's fall or winter, we're looking at that, we're looking at class sizes monthly, and we're looking at any time a new student enrolls. Because we've already established our staffing for the year, and we then have to make some determinations about, are we growing too fast? Do we, what do we need to do to address this that's happening within the school year? But once the spring comes around and we're planning for the upcoming school year, we're looking at class sizes weekly throughout the spring and the summer, and we're using that data to determine, how many classrooms of third grade do we need? How many sections of whatever subject at the high school do we need based on scheduling? And so we use that data, we need to continue to use that data to make sure that, you know, we're not, we don't want to be overstaffed, but at the same time, we don't want to be understaffed. And so the trick is using that data to try to figure out where we are right-sized. And we use these guidelines to help us make that decision. So let's take a look at, let's take a look at.
Oh, we just look at the sites.
So this is Roxbury.
Now, or?
This is, this multicolored section, you see this T-section?
Mm-hmm.
That is Roxbury now. And this dark blue area is where we would propose, if we needed to expand Roxbury, that's how we would do it. We could add six, seven, eight, nine, we could add eight classrooms, a new gym, new dining. And then, you know, you would need a couple of, you'd need another art room, you'd need another music room. And we haven't really gotten into the details of what all that looks like under all that roof. There's enough space on this site that if we knock down the gym, we could add all of this, all of this in here. And there's no guarantee that we would even need eight classrooms, you know? But the space is there for it. And if you'll recall, at Monday's board meeting, you approved us to take a look at this parking situation. When we knocked down Arthur Road, we took a lot of event parking away from Roxbury. And what we've determined is that if we add a parking lot here, we still have space left over to make that building expansion, but we can solve the event parking issue for Roxbury, but we can also solve the traffic problem that happens in the mornings and get all of that parent traffic off of Soul and Boulevard.
Mike, do you own all that land there now?
We do.
Where the new parking is?
We do, we own all of that land now.
I think it's important to note that as we look at this, one of the common things, as I've been talking to you guys going through it, you're saying, well, there's these projects that we're doing, and we have things that we're actually doing in our buildings now. And then you're saying we're going to demolish things after we're, if we're building new, we're going to demolish things, and we have a section of the high school that's, you know, 25 years old, it'll be 30 years old by the time this comes on. And the analogy I like to use for that is a car. I'm a guy who keeps my cars for like eight to 10 years, because I think that's the most fiscally responsible way to have a car. And.
No comment.
I know. I like to say frugal, she likes to say cheap.
No, I agree with you.
But.
I like new cars.
But I do maintenance on my cars all the time. I just, my eight-year-old Chevy, I just got rid of my eight-year-old Chevy for a new Kia. And just last year, I put brand-new tires on that car. So I spent $1,000, I want to say, maybe a little less, for brand-new tires on that car. And I don't drive that many miles, so I had years of mileage left on that. The year before that, I spent $1,500 on a rear, on the collision detection sensors that had gone bad. At some point, you say to yourself, how much more money am I going to put in this particular space? And once you've decided to make that change and you've moved on, that expenditure wasn't a bad expenditure 30 years ago. It was needed, but with a new facility, if that's not needed, you have to say to yourself, okay, it is new, and we're trying to utilize as much of that space as we can, but if we have to cut that because it's better for the kids to have a newer space, and it's going to cost us less money, and we're going to have a better space, I think that's the reason why we did that. But in all of these examples that you're looking at, what we're trying to do whenever possible is design these types of things that they will fit into the new overall master plan, regardless of which things we decide. So we're planning on coming to talk to you guys about a kitchen renovation in the coming weeks for Lewis. Well, we've designed that kitchen design so that if we have to build new parts that has a new kitchen, all of those kitchen components can be transferred without additional costs to us, or nominal cost to go through it. So we try to plan with the future in mind for any of those things that were going on. I know there were requests that Aaron made, that Aaron, that people made of Aaron for the building, that she said, nope, we're going to pause on those things for right now until we know what direction the school district's going in. But if there's space, like for example, the remainder of the roof over the naditorium, we know that that naditorium's going to be in place no matter what we do, so we know that that naditorium's going to be in place. So we know that putting, investing money and making sure that that space is maintained will be positive and will be a good use of our dollars.
Money well spent.
Right.
That's a conceptual plan for Roxbury, here's a conceptual plan for Lewis.
Lewis must have a ton, they have a ton of space.
Lewis has a lot of space, and one of the things that's kind of exciting about it is all that space. So off the east side of the building, there's actually space for, we drew it here for six classrooms, but there's actually space for six, 12, 14 more classrooms on that.
On that little site, yeah.
Not only 14 more classrooms, but also bigger dining and kitchen and gym to accommodate those new numbers, and also a dedicated bus loop, which it is, which it is missing because by law now, like parent traffic and bus traffic is supposed to be separate. Right now, we're dependent on the church to allow us, we've had a great historical partnership with the church, which has been just phenomenal for us, and I think them, but, you know, if you have the space and we can create our own, that's a consideration to make. But the exciting thing about Lewis is, you know, it can grow to, you know, a size of 650, the way that I said, but it's also got space for a whole lot more, if the district needs.
So if you needed to make changes, you could do that.
That's right. And the nice thing about this conceptual planning is we have something to go to when and if our projections or our analysis of the community says, hey, it's really time to start, take a look. We're not starting from scratch. So that is pretty much it. My recommendation with the elementaries is to shelve these plans until they're needed, but. The other thing that I didn't, that I neglected to say that I really want you to understand as well is, the numbers that you saw tonight were based on 2023 construction cost sets. The 2024 construction cost sets didn't appear until September of 2024. And those increased on average by about 3.5%.
Well, you have to expect.
Year after year, I think with, you know, we're still in an inflationary period, you're still going to, you're going to see those.
But either way, but either way, the costs might rise, but they rise for both.
Right, they do. They do. But I wanted to make sure everybody understood that those numbers are not set in stone. You know, they are sensitive, they're subject to those construction costs, and they're also sensitive to the detailed planning that would now happen, should we choose to go in a particular direction.
So what we're going to do, and I'm going to open you up for questions, but if you're going to ask questions about how we're going to pay for it, those questions are going to be addressed as part of our overall finance presentation. So if you have those questions, just hang tight on those. Do you have any other questions about the facilities?
No.
All right, we're going to take a very, very short break so that we can change for our next setup. Okay, so reading the room and seeing where we are, there's been a lot of really quality information that's been shared today. I think the work that Debbie's doing in responsive practices, the work that Mike has done with our facilities plan have been spectacular. We've been at it for about three hours at this point. I want to be fair to the, I want to give that same level of attention to the finance and communication sections of the strategic plan. So my recommendation is that we follow this up with an additional work session where we can cover those two facets of the program. And so I think it would be a good idea for us to put a pin in this for now, and then come back after our October board meeting to have another work session to cover the other two facets of our strategic plan.
Makes sense.
That works.
So at this point.
In light of that information, then, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'm moved.
Moved by Mr. Heckman, signed by Mrs. Barksdale. Mr. Buchanan, will you call the rule, please?
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mrs. Barksdale?
Yes.
Mr. DeFermont?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.